Yeah, please. Dear Lord, be with us as we do the city business and help us to make the area a better place to live. Thank you for all that you've done for us so far. Amen.
Alderman Daley?
Yes.
Alderman Campbell?
Yes.
Alderman Dunn?
Yes.
Alderman Finley?
Yes.
Alderman Dutton?
Yes.
Alderman Lincoln?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Parkson?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
You have a court.
Bruton Minutes. Of the law. Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Was that Alderman Dutton or Taylor?
I wanna thank for that some leadership of Houston County leadership on working out. I will have to say it's not... Y'all want to stand?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I will say that where I went through it is the most knowledgeable thing that I know went through. I didn't know that here made brick right here in, in the city. Uh, I learned from Ms. Finley's class she taught for the, uh, what, what place with the city's brick came from tonight. Uh, listen over to the video. Leading, they had got their own business. New business, uh, I let, uh, Chief Danny give us a raw report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, first two months of service here in our department, I have a type up here that's, uh, we've entered eighteen calls. The count of those up today is twenty-five calls. I have them for Mutual Aid calls to the county, along with Mutual Aid to the Tennessee City, all those for here in the city of here. Close the fires and fire alarms, after gas leaks, crashes, things like that nature. Um, our average response time, we call out the home scene, it's three minutes. So, we're about half of what the average is throughout the nation. Really good response time. Um, I do have some issues I need to bring up. In the early morning hours after the last city council meeting, we responded to a red call on old one forty-nine with engine three. Uh, it was dead without on fire, so had to pump with the pumpers. During that call, temperatures were around twelve degrees and some water leaked into a damaged aisle. I didn't have any oil to go, it was all dead to fail. Uh, which quite greatly concerned me, only I didn't call some professionals in. Terminal International, they have a department specializes in fire apparatus. Uh, they're gracious enough to come and inspect all the fire apparatus and tell me everything, well, light bulbs are out, so we made the problems look vehicles. Uh, they brought some problems, which in degree my attention, but, uh, are very urgent. Uh, if anything was to, uh, occur further than we could lose the house, it's no shame. I did go ahead and make the decision to send it off, they come out this morning to, uh, make those urgent repairs. And it can fix, the repairs needed comprise of things such as, uh, fill valves, tank valves, and the, uh, oh, actually. The urgent repairs are in a total of twenty-nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-two cents, including labor costs, out fees, and EPA fees. They didn't give me other estimates as far as, um, security service of the vehicles. Change of oil, change transmission fluid, filters, things like that nature. Uh, they do a complete inspection of all the apparatus whenever they do the service. That run's gonna have a two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, which is almost just as cheap as just having oil changed anywhere else in the world of that size. Uh, I am in the process of gathering more estimates from other companies that specialize in working on fire apparatus. Uh, for all the other repairs that aren't of a ma- of an urgent nature. But that engine three should be returned by Thursday after all urgent repairs been completed. Some fire fighters have come together to repair the tanker. A while back it had the, uh, drive shaft split in half concerning the tanker and damaged some things. Uh, the tanker does pump, but the, uh, allows, allows it to pump the damage, we do have that fixed now. Other than that, we have myself, Deputy Chief Hyman have decided to, uh, fill two of our lower management positions, the captain's spot and lieutenant's spot. Firefighter Dustin and some players have been promoted to captain and Firefighter Stephen Richardson has been promoted to lieutenant. You guys have any questions for me?
I did it, but two hundred and twenty-five, you said, well, not, not prepared, if you say that was.
No, man, that's a one-time service, yes.
That's a one-time service?
And Terminal International services include, they'll take everything, light bulbs in and out, the bad dams, they, they do a whole inspection of the car, they blow out us, change fluids and.
Well, you need to change fluids one month, one year.
Yes, yes.
So, it's just.
It'll be every six months.
So, you don't, you don't think it will go over this time?
No, ma'am, I, I, I've actually been in contact with the individual given estimates, uh, today's. And the original cost repairs, the, uh, the urgent repairs, engine three was a little bit higher than twenty-nine hundred dollars. And we brought things up to get it lowered before it was.
So, that six thousand will basically take care of?
It'll take care of all.
Of this part?
Yes, ma'am, and most of those are.
Okay, now, we've already spent nine thousand five and add six to it. Uh, that three thousand, we've only got five more to go. Um, what, five thousand, um, I mean, thirty thousand is how they netted us and we had to pay. Uh, five thousand, we have just, we have, um, in the budget, four repairs, in the budgeted four repairs. Now, but, but I mean, the total thing is ballpark twenty thousand was what we had in budget for everybody. We spent nine according to this state of view and six on this, we've not spent that six, that's just, um. This is gonna spend this for him.
Well, what he's spending is the twenty-nine eighty-eight. The other is not emergency repairs, it has, it'll be bid out.
No, I'm going on this, we always spend ninety-five hundred this year.
Okay.
And we're gonna spend, we're gonna spend right now three.
Well, according to this, the six, but that, that is work that has not been approved. Okay, but I, I don't know, and, and maybe it needs to be done before June, I, I, I just don't know. But all I, all I'm sure of is the twenty-nine eighty-eight right now.
Okay, what I'm saying is we're getting closer to the twenty thousand, right? It looks like we're going over. Hopefully, nothing happens.
Hannah, if you've got hard time with that, if that's bothering you, I'd like motion that you get a copy of every expense, uh, from Fire Department.
That really won't be a problem, um, Chief Warren is very, very good about giving us an itemized list of everything, he's kind of.
Yeah, but she doesn't get it.
I think what she's concerned about is not that they're just, not that they're not justified, but that it's more than what, what we've had.
I'm not saying this, it's not, none of it is, just that it poses her a problem.
Understood. What I'm going on is the budget, the one, that's why the buyer's problem was twenty thousand. We spent nine, we don't spend six more, that makes three thousand out. That means we got five thousand more that we'll deal out, or we're going to wait?
But, uh, these are, these are, these are things here, other than the change in the oil and all that, these other changes are just in.
The repair line, if there are one times that, uh.
Or probably these same things will be.
Look, they're not returning pictures.
Look, it's a truck that we got from over.
Come on, come on.
This is our.
This is a truck that Mayor Finley bought from me in his office that has its bad lightning and so much trouble.
No, no, ma'am, the truck we got from over is on some break conditions, uh, I have any comments on it actually from the fire department?
The next year we're not maxing it out, but you say again, it's something to prepare to be big, and they're gonna be out there.
While the city's been fused from that part, and since we are sub-taught, um, on a monthly basis.
Okay, I'm sure.
Then we're not. You thought we're gonna ban it in the middle?
So, we need a motion, okay, this matter is gonna be working that, when they have to get through, what do you, what do you need to come up?
Uh, it is over twenty-five hundred dollars of repairs needed, uh, they have started on most of it.
I'll make a motion that, um, here prove that the, uh, emergency repairs on the engine three, uh, approximately three thousand.
All right, so Megan, I was used to, when I was over for vacation, all, all the paid bills, we got a list. Cause Camille Lashley was always asking, why we buy this much mercury? It was mercury supplies or we got our, uh, footing supplies?
We have, we have, uh, accounting that anyone is welcome to come and look at, it's about this thick, you know, it's big, big, you know, the humps that they did.
No.
Um, it, it's there, it's pretty easy to, to look at.
I believe he just gives us a list instead of.
I think about you about.
But with this one, it's always costing us dollars, so it, it's made by, I had a clue, but it over this thing. But that's why I'm thinking, like, I've got that.
Have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The, uh, the, uh, next thing, we had told Danny that we'd give him two hundred dollars a month, but we've, uh, had a hard time getting it advertised in the steer use of times. Uh, in fact, I think we tried about four weeks to get a paying run to harm. I would like to get a motion to, to pay Danny the two hundred dollars and make it, uh, retroactive back to, uh, December when we're supposed to get it.
A motion.
Send it.
We're ready to get it.
Well. Everybody in? Okay.
We, we appointed, we appointed him chief.
Definitely.
Until we could advertise, we had to advertise, once we advertised, we have to appoint him officially. Once it's been advertised. And maybe we, maybe that's overkill, but I'd rather do it just to make sure that's safe.
Second. We have a motion and a second for harm, Mr. Warren is, uh, chief.
Can you combine those two, we need to do?
Just make the motion.
Make the motion, what she said, he's got.
To hire him and.
Back, back to the.
Okay, okay.
And pay him retroactive.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We made the motion on the pan park, the fire truck deal. We traded, we did a deal a while back, got permission to trade our White International truck to the county for a four-wheel drive truck. And we knew we're gonna have to have a little work done to it when we traded it to make the snowplow work. And, uh, it's about thirty-nine hundred dollars to put the, uh, pump out there on it before it would pump the hydraulic fluid through to make the blade raise up and that. And, uh, I'd like to get a motion to pay that thirty-nine hundred dollars for the, uh, snowplow truck.
Make the motion to pay the thirty-nine hundred dollars for the snowplow truck.
Second. Has it already been fixed? It's, it's not, it's not fixed yet. We carried it over there to give us a bid on it, hopefully we can get it fixed and get it back there for the snowplow. You knew that was gonna happen when you worked out the deal and traded. Yeah, I knew we was gonna have to do some work, I didn't dream about it being this high.
Where is that money coming from, Mayor?
Uh, it's coming out from the street, right, Mr. Finley, right?
It comes out of streets, something.
Is that something we're not gonna get on?
We have, there's actual.
We, we've gotten, the only place that we can find that had the time that could do it is up in Semple. Where we carried this famous bucket truck over and get it fixed. There's a man out here on forty-sixth highway, told us that if we had came to him two months before now, he had a dead spot, that he could build them a thing we needed. But, uh, he didn't have time to quit his regular customers now to work on, he wouldn't, he wouldn't even talk to us about a price. But this is a swamp with the county, right? Sir? This is a swamp with. This is swamp for. The county bearing any of the fence on it? No, sir, they, they got a good truck. It just run the four-wheel drive. Some of these hills we got, I really wanted the four-wheel drive dump truck to spread salt and bred snow.
Mayor, that dollar's doing considerable, is that the end of nowhere?
I've never been there, Ms. Finley, but I think it is.
I've been there.
And I don't be, I don't even know his name right now, but.
He's one time, one, when he's alive, same old same.
Yeah.
You can't get there from here.
Yeah. That's what Frank Stavitt told me, that it was hard to get there from here. He said, and he said some of them curbs, he can't count the pedal outs on that old five-ton dump truck.
And the last one I was grabbing.
Huh?
The last one I was grabbing.
Yeah. I'd like to back up just one minute, we got a new, uh, I think he's a, uh, leader, uh, ship, Houston County man sitting right here to come in. I'd like to work with him, I got the others. And I'll tell you what I told him, it's best class that I have ever sat through. I agree, thank you. Uh. We have a motion for repairs on dump truck, I never did ask for. Yeah, you motion in a second. I need a all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Do you, uh, did I neglect answer a question for you, Ms.?
Uh, no, it was, we were asking about if, if being, and you heard anybody vote or whatever. If you asked, so that's my question.
Our, uh, our work session will be at the January twenty-sixth. And, uh, you'll see you've got a, uh, city of here and employee handbook in your package. I want you to study of it and we'll probably, instead of having a work session, we'll come in here and talk about this, uh, uh, handbook. Rules and regulations on the twenty-sixth of January.
This is probably just a draft.
And, uh, if you see any, uh, misprints in it, be sure, I've done, told her about one, or she made a typo. But, uh, just, uh, if you run up on her four months and you got forty days in it, then, uh, mark out the old and leave it, uh, four months. Anybody got any, uh, any comments? I'd, I'd like to make a comment, of course, we'll have to change the charter and get it done. I'd like to, uh, work up some kind of deal with our television station. Our charter says we have to run our one ads and what have you in the local paper. But since we've had such a hard time getting those other ads run, I'd like to, uh, see about doing something with the charter. Let Mike Davis and them share on some of this one ad, uh, thing.
Are there some other things we need to fix in the charter anyway?
Yes, there's quite a, quite a few things, in one section in the charter, when you go over a little further, this, this second part de- deletes what the first part ever says completely. I found that when we was doing with the, uh, treasurer.
I need a typically, some big, some little minor.
Sometime that, I don't know that we'd have time to get it worked and get it legislated this session, but sometime before the end of two thousand twelve, I'd like to come in and have a meeting and see what we can get worked out. I don't wanna make no major changes, I just wanna clarify. It says our money has to go on here and that's no where you're banking all, we got three banks in here. And I've got my brother's, well, I'm brother bank, but that's a, uh, bowl. If we have nothing else, I get a motion to adjourn.
Uh, um, do we have a warrant on Chief?
Chief, I'm sorry, that's not my, I had your mic laying out here and I.
I'm sorry, I, uh, we lost that agenda and just took you right off.
Um, we, we asked permission to, to replace Officer Brian who resigned. We had trouble getting it in paper, um, advertising, and we finally got the end. They had very little interest in the position. We're in first part of January, it's a slow period, I would like for the time being just to hold off. And we're working it now, see, see how it go until a little of it, all in the year, um, before we fill out, so we can have opportunity to maybe re- re-advertise it and get, get some more interest in it. And also, I've got two officers that back in budget time, they was, within a couple of weeks of having their year in, they was, they would have been due a step raise and an oversight that you needed to put in the budget. I would ask that those two, um, get getting their step raised, um, back to, and something to get back.
They did a good job, I make the motion, we give them the spent rights.
That, that, that's what it should have been given.
Retroactive, the winning.
We have a motion second. We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Chief, I have one question, second. Um, obviously, I don't think anybody's objecting to your making do till later. Is this gonna cause your department over time to go up? We, we worked it, uh, Mr. Taylor, and, um, I, I don't perceive, when I did, uh, time sheets today, there was no overtime incurred other than.
Okay, you're just questioning if you're, if you're gonna have to fill in some.
I don't, I don't see it as wrong.
Chief, are you saying, saying it's just because it's a slow time?
Yeah, I mean.
When we get closer to March, you're gonna have to have some help.
Sure, sure, but I'm hoping with, with time and, and maybe we can get more interest.
Word around.
Right.
Just don't worry yourself out.
Right.
She's gonna re-advertise in the paper or?
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I, I'd like to get a little off, see, see how it's gonna work out maybe every time.
Yeah, I mean, you can never fly.
I don't want, I don't want eliminated, I mean, that's, I don't want that.
How many people can never fly?
I, I think I had over, I'm certified, I've never seen it in the paper, just word around, but I had one or two certified, so I'm just, uh, gonna be worried, so I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather give it time and get somebody that I'm confident in and, and just fit on the position because. Sorry, I grew up too. I'm sorry, can, can I tell them about our, our, I thought Mayor Laurie today, our big dental truck, we've got all the equipment. I'll get now, I showed it to all of them today, talked to him past today, and everything that we're wanting to do from it is, is available to be paid out of the drill fund at no cost to the city. And so, that was a big relief to me, and we're excited and ready to start and, uh, looking at.
I do, um, I don't explain by literature class what you do with that and, and sit back to where we got it and, and what we're gonna do, how you got it too. And how you got it.
We, uh, we've got them with, uh, the military, uh, uh, defense reutilization. And what we do is, is they absorb us property through the military and local law enforcement agencies, right, and to obtain that free of charge. Um, we got a thirty-foot dental truck, it's a prey liner dental truck, and, uh, my plan is to, which we have, we've sold the equipment out of it, and it's got two ten-to-ten offices, restroom, um, everything, the truck had fourteen thousand miles on it when we got it. And, uh, we're gonna make a mobile command unit out of, out of it for disasters, tornadoes, anything like that, it'll have communications in it. Also where for, for us to work out of, um, at checkpoints, any kind of, any kind of disasters and stuff like that. And, um, and most of the other equipment that we do get from them, we can keep it a year, if we, if we don't have the use for it, we can transfer it to another agency or we can sell it. And everything goes into the drill fund to do the work like we're gonna do on it.
You know, but see, I just think, it's a big truck that's back here.
And, and it's actually powered up, if any of you, when you're done, go and go look through it, it's, it's not complete, you know, we just got some things out of it, but it's ran back here, running, tired up, come on, go look in it, it's built for you.
Chief, how much do we get out of the equipment?
Um, we, we had a four twelve that we sold, uh, twelve.
I'm sorry, I'm just talking about the dental equipment out of the truck.
It was, uh, three fifty, three fifty-three seventy-five, something like that.
I think there was something there, you told us how much you got on those types of.
And, and I don't know that we, did we put the dump truck in, but we sold the dump truck on GoDills and that from, uh, about ninety-five hundred dollars.
I paid for the, for the, the thing, so we'll have a snowplow. Um. Any question?
Well, it was just, did, was you able to turn around with what you made off of the dental equipment to help purchase the, the, to pay for it?
It's free.
You thought it was free?
Yeah, it, it's free.
Okay, agreed.
We, we requested, and the sheriff's department's obtained quite a, quite a bit of things too. Uh, like I said, it didn't cost us none, we had to put it forward to be able to justify it, and they tell us to go and get it.
Transformation. Okay, I heard you say it didn't cost the city anything, you were like.
Right, and, and, and then whatever we sold out of it, we can turn around and invest.
Okay.
Do you still have the picture of the before and after with the stickers, decals and all that on it?
I'm not sure.
I was gonna say, that one might be. I still say that's what might be interested in too, it's really interesting.
Like two hundred each, we've gotten the bulldozer, the demo truck, what else, I mean, all these have been.
We've got two dump trucks, two four wheels.
These are all in free, we can keep them a year and then we get to sell them for profit, but, but most of the equipment we're getting are, are things that we need for the city.
And, and what, what, whatever we sell before goes back to our drill fund to use for drill work, to buy equipment for our police departments and to save, you know, anything like that, radios and kind of equipment. Chief, and I'm, I'm sure being, being, you see, we've also had our, our home and pipe, it's no cost to the city.
Does it have lights on it now?
It's fully equipped, it's got radar and lights and everything.
Y'all were using it, uh, New Year's speed, correct? That's all they use, as a matter of fact, what I don't think.
It, it turned out well, and one of our local body drops was kind of enough to back the boys. There for.
Thank you.
Anything else from police chief? I forgot, we had two chiefs sitting in the audience when I just called on chief a while ago. Um, if we have nothing else, give a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?